Thank you. Good evening and welcome to Monday, August 21st, 2023 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Shirley Murdoch, Member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are gathered together in the capacity of a City Council meeting. We ask Thy blessings to be upon our mayor and each member of the City Council and our city manager as they conduct the affairs of our city, that they might be blessed with guidance and insights to make the decisions that are beneficial for the citizens and yet are protective. We ask thee to bless our emergency personnel. We're grateful for their service. We ask thee to bless them with safety and discernment and we appreciate them. We ask thee to bless the citizens of Independence and we are grateful to be members of this wonderful city. And we ask blessings upon the teachers and the students of Independence School District that are starting a brand-new school year under a different schedule. And we ask blessings upon them, that they'll adapt to it and that it'll be beneficial to them. Dear Father, we are concerned with our fellow Americans in Maui and in California that are experiencing such awful things and disaster and trauma. We ask Thy blessings to be upon them and give thee deep appreciation that we have been spared such things. We love thee, give thee our devotion, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now, we're going to the Citizens Request portion. Mr. Capps, you are first, and then Deborah Baker Anatos is after that. You come up, Walter. I was just teeing folks up to know who would be next. So, Walter, you have five minutes. Please proceed.
All right. Thank you for letting me speak today. I am now staying at 5,000 Oak Street at the UNKC dorms in the Johnson Hall. I just started there. I start my first classes tomorrow. I'm going to be trying to major in political science and then hopefully go into law myself. I'm talking today because I want to thank you all for the great discussion you all had on the ethics reform last week. I am really glad that you guys are taking this seriously. A lot of people in the city feel the, well, from what I've talked to, you know, everybody just assumes, you know, their government is corrupt because of how things are going with our national politics. And if I'd like to make one suggestion that I came up with while listening to you all discuss, I remember you all were discussing, you know, what, you know, whether something economically benefits, you know, you all and what the wording should be. I think the wording would be, if it would be only themselves and their family members, this way you all could still, you know, do stuff that would like, say, help the Truman Library, you know, which is a public good, or do something that has to do with renting, you know, because that wouldn't just help you or your families, that would help multiple people in the city. You guys don't want to end up tying your hands so that you can't do anything to help anybody, you know, and help them out with their economic situations because a lot of people are dealing with a hard economic situation themselves here in the city. So, again, I'd like to thank you all for taking this seriously. Most people, you know, wouldn't be willing to sit through a two-hour discussion, and I also want to thank you all for allowing people to come up here and speak. Coming up here to speak has actually done a pretty good job at boosting my personal confidence and ability to talk with people. And, you know, it doesn't cost you anything to come up here to speak. All you got to do is just go up to the City Clerk, ask for a Citizens Request Form, and I would encourage anybody here today or anybody who is watching this, you know, in the future, if you have an issue or you see an issue in the city and you want it to get addressed, the best way to do it is fill out a form and then come up here and speak. I guess I'll just close out by saying, you know, I really do appreciate the city and the City Council. You guys are a lot more friendly than, you know, I would have expected and, you know, I won't be able to come up here as often as I have been because I'm going to be trying to get involved with the student government at the UNKC, and their meetings are 6:00 PM on Mondays as well. So, I'd like to thank you. This is my home, and I will always consider this to be my home. Thank you.
Walter, I've seen you improve your speaking skills tremendously, so I applaud you for your efforts, and you've always been a gentleman and very kind, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Next is Deborah Baker Anatos. Deborah Baker Anatos. Oh, and also, we need to have a motion for accepting some non-residents. We do have those. Could I have a motion for non-residents?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. So, Deborah, we'll put you aside, and if you show up, if Deborah knows, if anyone knows Deborah, please let her know that she's got a slot to speak.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to take a, actually, roll call vote for that.
Do we? Okay.
To suspend the rules, yeah.
Absolutely. That's a great point. Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, please forgive me. Please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes. And the motion to suspend the rules to allow non-residents to speak passes. Ms. Huff, you come on up. Yeah, don't shy away from the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Colleen Huff, and I live at 717 South Willis Avenue. And I am speaking this evening against the resolution that's being proposed, Resolution Number 23773. This resolution states that council-sponsored items would need three members to move any action item to the regular meeting agenda. So, I attended the town hall, the mayor's town hall, on January 10th where this was presented to the residents, and this was highly unpopular at the town hall. And I believe that every council member was elected to represent their residents that live in their area, and every district needs to be represented equally. The council works for the people, and the people need equal representation. There's been a couple of recent issues that have come up that had this resolution been in place, this would have never even made it to the agenda. One of those things was a citywide trash service. So, had this procedure, or had this resolution been in place, we would have no longer been able to choose our favorite trash service. And personally, our entire neighborhood uses Ted's trash service. So, and the other thing that was, the same evening was discussed, was prayer at the beginning of the council meetings, and that is definitely needed, especially in our city. So, basically, I feel like this resolution would silence opposing dissent, and I don't think it's fair to the elected council members or the residents that live within their district. And as a taxpayer, since the council works for the people, all the voices need to be And I know the issue, I mean, there's issues with the charter because during the last mayoral election, when I was the third person and was only beaten by 106 votes, and then the person that came in second decided that she was not going to campaign any longer, there was nothing in the charter to even address this. I had talked to attorneys, and I feel like there does need to be ethics reform, and those things that are not addressed clearly in the charter do need to be addressed. And as a matter of fact, during that town hall, I was publicly asked to be a part of the Ethics Committee, but no one ever reached out to me to make me a part of that. So, I mean, it is what it is, but I just feel like what was touted on the ethics reform was term limits on council members and caps on donations and just the council being able to serve the residents better. So, I feel like this resolution actually is contrary to what was promised to the people. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. Next is Lucy Young. And then after Lucy will be Marla Kimble.
I almost feel like Jaws, the music to Jaws should play when I walk up to the podium. Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057. A person commented on my political Facebook page that the Model Railroad Museum was not going to pay any rent, or as she put it, "So, the city put in an emergency action for free rent in an out-of-town model train club." I just couldn't believe that was true. In early June, I asked a council member about the woman's comment. The second week of August, I was told, apparently, it's free for the first year while they are building out. Then it ramps up over time. I submitted a records request because I wanted to see what was in that agreement. Exhibit 2 lists the various expenses and who is responsible for paying them. It appears that the Model Railroad Museum's lease rent is free for the first five years as it is marked NA in Exhibit 2. The museum's utilities are free for the first five years, including electric, natural gas, water, and sewer. The museum is allowed to keep all revenues from both ticket and gift store sales so they can build up their bank account to make future payments that are marked due in year six. In year six, the lease rent is marked TBD, to be discussed. The city is also providing security for the building. The city is purchasing security cameras and paying for 24-hour monitoring for the next 25 years. Someone from the park staff will be contacted to secure the building if an alarm goes off. Now, I don't dispute that the Model Railroad Museum will draw new visitors, but the language in that resolution states that the park's recreation and tourism department seeks to identify funding to continue and expand services and programs for a financially sustainable organization, as stated in the 2023 City of Independence Action Plan. To continue? Does that mean that the Model Railroad Museum is being paid for or has already been included in that program? And just how financially sustainable is an organization that requires the city to help pay for their rent and utilities for five years? What is most frustrating to me is that this agreement was not added to the April 17th Consent Agenda. Bill 23-734, a resolution with the intent with the Missouri Model Railroad Museum, had only two pages, the cover sheet, which did not contain fiscal impact information, and the resolution. The council approved that resolution on the 17th. The agreement was signed on the 21st. Was this complex agreement developed in just over four days? I honestly don't know if any of the council members knew about the details of this agreement as it wasn't in the council agenda packet. This was not discussed at the council meeting, and it only had one reading. So, did anybody see this agreement after the vote? I have another question. Is the Model Railroad Museum's funding tied to Item 29 on tonight's consent agenda? That resolution's language states, "City staff anticipates recommending additional funding be it allocated to future fiscal years to support additional nonprofit entities seeking to grow tourism activities within the community." Does that word "additional" include the Model Rail Museum? I realize that these are tourism dollars, but the citizens deserve to know how the Model Railroad Museum is being subsidized now. Remember, there were no funding sources noted on the cover sheet. I watched your study session held last Monday night, and I have to tell you, it was like watching paint dry. But I thought the subject matter concerning the ethical conduct of the city was important. But what difference does it make if city staff are held to a different standard? I still wouldn't know about this agreement had it not been for that woman's Facebook comment. That agreement didn't exist according to the agenda. The city's charter is very clear. Stated in Section 5.2, Number 4, "No council member, board member, or employee shall grant a special consideration, treatment, or advantage to any citizen beyond that which is available to every other citizen." So, go ahead. Paint the council's ethical requirements with as broad a brush as you want, but if this type of subterfuge is allowed to continue, what's the point? Otherwise, transparency is just a buzzword. I emailed your administrative secretary, and all of you have a copy of the resolution and then the cover sheet and the agreement. Please read it. Go to the very end and see Exhibit 2 to know that I am telling the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And if I could ask, I realize there's lots of opinions in this room. Please refrain from applause because this could become a sporting event, and I just ask you very kindly to be respectful of that. Marla Kimble? Marla, you have five minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the audience. Thank you for coming. The mayor and the city council. My name is Marla Kimble. My address is 25605 Southwest Wyatt Road, Blue Springs, Missouri. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I lived in Independence for 45 years, and my husband gave this city 30 years of his life to protect and serve its citizens as a policeman. I am the Vice President of the Independence Loggers Retirees, and I want this city to be successful. I come before you this evening to speak in regards to Non-Ordinance Action Item 23-774. What a surprise. For your consideration, the rule change that's being addressed, one of them, 6.4, is in direct conflict with the rules you've outlined for a study session, and I quote the rules outlined in Section 3.4 regarding study sessions. The council shall meet informally in study sessions once per month and may convene for additional study sessions at the call of the mayor or of any four members of the council to review forthcoming programs of this city, receive progress reports on current programs or projects, or receive other similar information from the city manager, provided that all discussions and conclusions thereon shall be informal. The council may vote at a study session, only to direct staff to add an item to an upcoming regular council meeting agenda for formal action. The problems I have with this are, does this not mean that you're only reviewing programs coming up and receiving progress of programs in progress and only adding an agenda item when you believe more formal structure is needed on that program or project? The agenda item tonight seeks to change the very structure of the study session without changing the procedures and rules of the study session. Additionally, the study session only meets once per month, and I have seen months where it does not meet at all. And it can meet more often, only at the request of the mayor or four members of the council. The proposed rule change and the current rules of study session will, in effect, impose a reduced ability for voices to be heard and increase the ability to control the narrative. Point number two for your consideration, that is in regards to Section 6.4 and the main item. One member of the council is able to add an item to the study session agenda. At the study session, three members must vote to move that action item to a regular meeting agenda. All council-requested items have to be submitted to the city manager or city clerk on or before 9:00 AM two Thursdays prior to the study session for a city council meeting for which the agenda is being published. You know, for me, it's supposed to be about principles before personalities. That's my biggest concern. The principle should still be the power of one person, whether in the minority or the majority, to place an item on the city council meeting agenda for consideration. Everyone was elected by the people and for the people. This is the essence of democracy. Personal attacks and statements about this is the way it is done in Jefferson City cloud the basic principle. Point number three for consideration, and that's the rule change 6.15. This rule change totally eliminates the ability to request an ordinance proposal. It's all marked out and is designed to only allow requests for legal opinions. Again, a change to control the narrative and ignore the principle.
You have one minute.
I believe that we should always place principles before personalities. I believe that we cannot change how someone acts, but we do have the power to change how we react. I am concerned that it is becoming more important to control the narrative than it is to value the principle for every citizen and councilperson in Independence. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McKee, you have five minutes, please.
I'm Richard McKee, 3804 Hayden Drive. Good evening, citizens, council members, and our mayor. We elect council members to represent us, the citizens, and mostly, they do a good job. This resolution to expect three members to approve a resolution is so undemocratic, it stifles free speech. Why doesn't this body debate any resolution? This is an open, that is an open and free speech city. Let's not stifle different opinions. Let us embrace open debates over policy. Ordinance 23774 should be rejected.
Mr. Love? And Mr. Love, you have five minutes.
Kenneth Loves, 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence. I'm here tonight to speak about the homeless, but before that, thank everybody for being here. On August 15th, I contacted four councilmen. Since I cannot say the councilman that I contacted, I'll state it like this. The first councilman that I called answered the phone, and I explained, "A new homeless camp has been set up at 23rd and Lee Summit Road." Within 15 minutes, this problem was addressed, and this person was moving on. Later on that afternoon, same day, August 15th, I contacted three other council people through their messages on their phone. One, I have not heard from. Another one stated that he was out of town, but he would refer to IPD. Couple days later, I asked this councilperson what is taking place. He said, "Nothing. The police cannot make contact." I referred, "The police are not working hard enough because the homeless people that are there are out before 4:00 AM in the morning." The next councilperson that I contacted, same picture, same information, wanted to know who I was. My answer to that councilman was, "I'm a resident of Independence. We have a homeless problem, and nothing is being done. We have a program that's been started, picking up trash, but as they go down the road picking up trash, they're leaving these yellow bags for days and days and days till somebody goes and picks them up." Not only that, you talk about trash from the homeless, let's talk about $4,000 that this city has spent on one particular park to clean up. That kind of money should not be spent. It's time we use our resources. But again, we cannot use our resources due to the fact Independence Police Department has no place to house prisoners or anybody going to jail. I wonder why? Where do we take our prisoners to? Can anybody answer that? Where we take our prisoners to? How about some Johnson County stuff? But it's my understanding Johnson County has started remodeling. So, in other words, now, not only have our council kicking the can down the road, I feel our police department's kicking the can down the road by not addressing the homeless, not addressing ordinances that we have on books. Yeah, they'll show up for panhandlers and say, "You got to go." Soon as they leave, panhandlers are right back there. It's time, and I'm sorry to say this, it is time to stop kicking this can down the road, giving these people chance after chance after chance after chance. It's time we either take them or we move them. It's simple as that. But I'm going to cut my time shorter than that because I have an emergency to go to. So, real quick, I would stay, but real quick, please, I just want to let you know that I'm against the 39th Street Project. The reason I'm against it is due to the fact this is an out-of-state company coming in to build, to invest, to build an apartment complex. That apartment complex is an investor from California, so that money won't stay here. Not only that, me and a person had a meeting earlier this year, shit, as a landlord, I would not like what he's got coming up this year. But it's all of a sudden, we getting apartments after apartments after apartments, but I'm a small-type investor, and you don't want me investing? There's a big problem.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Bob Sorenson. I live at 800 Southwest Powell Drive, Oak Grove, Missouri. I am president of the Independence Loggers Retiree Group. I am here today to address the resolution amending the council rules of procedure. I am not sure why this resolution is on the agenda and who on the council placed it on the agenda, since there is no name attached. This question was asked at the last council meeting, but no one would take responsibility for placing this on the agenda. I thought that the change to 6.4 of the rules had already been discussed at a prior council meeting a few months ago and also at a town hall meeting at the Truman Memorial Building that was called by the mayor. I was present at both of those meetings, and I, as well as- I was present at both of those meetings, and I, as well as many other individuals, expressed their opposition to the changes that again are being proposed in this resolution. I am not saying there was nobody in favor of the changes, but it was only a couple, and they were definitely in the minority. I thought that the issue was dead, but apparently I was wrong. Both rule changes that are being proposed are wrong and should be voted down seven to zero. Each of you are elected by voters to represent them on the council. Each of you should have the ability to place something on the agenda, to have it discussed by all of you, as well as concerned citizens and organizations. No rule change should ever be considered that would change this right. A rule change that can silence the minority on the council as well as citizens is a violation of the First Amendment. The current rule as it is written allows for all council members and citizens to have equal input at council meetings. At your last council meeting on August 7th, there was an ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 16 of the Board of Ethics. This was on the agenda with a councilperson's name attached. There were two former city councilpersons who signed up to speak on this ordinance. Both spoke as to how this ordinance would be in violation of the mayor and council First Amendment rights. Both gave good presentations. When the ordinance came up to be read, the councilperson who placed it on the agenda made a motion to remove the ordinance based on the presentation of the speakers. A motion was made to remove the ordinance by 7-0 vote. This is a perfect example of how the current rules do work. I have in the past and could give many examples again on how the rule change could have impacted the retirees that I represent over the past five years. It is because of the current rule that has allowed an individual councilmember to place an item on the agenda that had a direct impact on the retirees. This made it possible for discussion and input from our group as well as citizens. As a result, the council was able to vote on these issues, and in every case, which there has been many, the votes were seven to zero. This is proof that the current rule works, and the proposed change would totally have made all of this impossible. Examples, defunding post-65 health insurance, outsourcing of benefits to a company named New Synergy, fees to the void of fixed interest accounts, open enrollment, incorrect information, et cetera. Just as recently as last year, which I am sure each of you remember, open enrollment for health insurance was pushed back as far as it could be to address issues. A councilmember made a motion, and it was passed 7-0 to form a special committee to address issues with the Staywell Healthcare Plan. This would probably not have been possible under the proposed new rules. We want to require things to go to a study session. Are they to be attended by the, are they required to be attended by the mayor and council? Is there even a requirement to have study sessions? Are you even allowed to vote at a study session? Are citizens or organizations allowed to speak at study sessions? I believe the answer to all these questions are no. Your rule change states it requires a vote of three members at a study session to have an item placed on the agenda. I was at the last study session when this was being discussed by all of you. You agreed that you could not take a vote, so you wanted to put that part removed and to say something like it would take three members to agree to put an item on the agenda. I would say to you that that is a vote. To conclude, I believe I understand why this is being proposed. I believe there are people that want other items, want other items on the agenda that are supported by the majority. I would say this is totally wrong. I again would ask each of you to vote no on this resolution and protect each and every one of your rights as an elected individual to have your voice heard. Also, protect the citizen and organization's rights so that their voices can be heard. Study sessions are not required, and people are not allowed to speak. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Good evening, city council members, and thanks for everybody taking time out of their evening to be here. Michael Huff, 16501 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, Missouri. Just another resident, another voice, hoping to add a bit of perspective to some of the problems we have. Some of you might remember I was up in that chair once and faced the challenges that come with it, but I learned, and something that I truly believe, is the duty to our community doesn't just end because a title term ends. When I get a chance to serve, when I got a chance to serve, it was a privilege. It's not a prestige of power, but about the opportunity to make a difference in the community in which I was born, raised, worked here my whole life, and was elected official. I served during the pandemic, served to fight for our families, schoolchildren, and our business community during tough times. This was very hard times for everybody, just not a few. Our local businesses, from mom-and-pop shops to bigger outlets, all took a hit. We had to rally behind them, not just because it's a slogan, but it's because of the success is our city's success. I've listened to former officials come here time and again, only offering criticism without presenting solutions. When I sat up there, I complained about the same thing. Everybody comes up with a problem, but no one has any solutions. We need to understand that offering criticism does not bring change. We need actionable ideas now more than ever. That's the essence of public service, and it's precisely what our city deserves for all of us, and we continue to serve one another. I took the initiative that I firmly believe underlies our commitment to community safety. My recent action was to raise private funds for partnership with local businesses, the longstanding business of Cable Dahmer Auto Group. The sole purpose was to bolster our strength of IPD by acquiring a new member for the K9. Now, why is this action so important? Well, these days, this is the modern policing, and the skills is unimaginable. They track, apprehend suspects, narcotics, explosives, aid and rescues. It's an ever-changing world for the police daily, and this is the best resource that we can get, and it's necessary. And so I fought for the time when I was on council for public safety. It was my number one thing, was public safety, and all the surveys pointed to, I think every survey we ever had up there was, public safety is number one. Moreover, this partnership between the private citizens, businesses, and the police department sends a powerful message. Our community care and public safety is important. In a time when it is easy to point fingers and lay blame, it's initiatives like these that build bridges. By working with Cable Dahmer Group and others, we are showing that public safety is not solely the duty of the police and the government, it's a shared responsibility. It's also worth noting that our local business community doesn't stop here. It showcases the investment and the well-being of our community they serve and profit from. Cable Dahmer Auto Group involved underlies that they're just not here for business, they're part of our community. Lastly, proactive efforts to raise K9 created a ripple effect. It fosters spirit, community involvement encourages others to participate in the initiative. Since this time, I've got all kinds of phone calls for, got a $5,000 check for another dog from a citizen, not even, doesn't even live here, and I've had numerous calls for other people that want to donate to get another dog. I think we're still short one or needing one more. But it reinforces the trust, this initiative, and most importantly, it reinforces the trust between IPD and the community. But don't be confused, don't be confused on the commitment to safety and the betterment of community. It's the testament to what we can achieve and when we can come together with shared goals. I genuinely believe that our collective efforts will go a long way to ensure our community remains safe haven for all of us. Being here tonight, speaking about what I'm seeing, I want to urge every one of us, especially my colleagues from past and present terms, to remember why we started this journey. It's not about pointing fingers or holding grudges. It's about stepping up, sharing our insights, and working together for folks who trust us to do the right thing, even after we leave the office. So the personal attack should be opposed, should be set aside, let's roll up our sleeves and get to work, because serving the community, that's the never-ending privilege and honor. In my conclusion, over the last 16 months, I've been watching, like many of you, and honestly, I've been waiting for some real action directed towards the real problems of the city this faces. But it seems like this council has more focus on rules and process issues than getting things done. I don't agree with the direction, especially with the agenda rule change being proposed tonight. It's more evidence that the real business of our city is being ignored. Centralizing power through one or two. That's fine. Thank you.
Dakota, and Dakota, how do you pronounce your last name, please?
Worrell.
Worrell, thank you. And please state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Dakota Worrell, 1404 Baker Drive. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to even come up here and talk to you face-to-face. I am speaking on the ordinance or the resolution, non-ordinance item 2374, and I'm speaking out against it. Someone mentioned earlier that we had a town hall on this item, and it was wildly unpopular. We had a very long meeting, we talked it to death. It was, they really tried to sell it, and the people just weren't buying it, and for good reason, you know. This is just a procedural way to, you know, it's tyranny of bureaucracy really is what it is. It's a way to shut out opposition on the council. You know, you change the rules and you want more structure and you think it makes it more efficient. It doesn't really do any of those things. Really, the way things are right now is flexible enough that I can go to my councilman and, you know, they can put an item on the agenda, they can respond flexibly to, you know, things as they develop. I really think that this rule change would actually hamper that process. It would hamper our ability to directly communicate with our councilpeople and for our councilpeople to act on our behalf effectively on the council. And it is, what it will do, based on the current composition of the council, is it will create a supermajority that will shut out the minority voices. That might not be your intention, but that is what it will do, you know, effectively. And I don't think that's acceptable. I don't think that anybody in this room really wants that. I don't, I know the people of Independence don't want that. They told you so. They told you they don't want that. And I am shocked that we're back here discussing it again, but I'm here to say, "We don't want this," and if this is brought up again, we'll be back to say, "We don't want it again," as many times as it takes. This rule change, really, it's one thing to be in favor of speech that you agree with, it's another thing entirely to defend speech that you don't agree with, and that goes for everybody in this room. So I think that, and we really just need to stop bringing this up, vote it down, and, you know, support the speech and the ability to act of the people that you disagree with on this council. And thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Did, what was her name? Deborah Baker, Anna Tose, I believe. I just wanted to give her the opportunity, if she in fact came in, I wanted to make sure she had the opportunity to speak. Deborah Baker. Okay. Very good. And thank you all. This brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Okay, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. We have a motion and a second to accept the council agenda items. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull item number two from the reports and recommendations of the city manager. I'd like to pull item number 26 and item number 27.
Hold on one second, please, so I can follow along with you, please. Item number 26?
Item number two, item number 26, and item number 27.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Number 29 for me, please.
Please proceed.
Item number 10.
Okay, hold on, let me make sure I get them all. Okay.
And resolution 23771.
Pardon me. 23771. I'm gonna repeat them just to make sure that we're all on the same hymnal, same page, and make sure I didn't miss any. Councilmember Stewart asked for item number two to be pulled.
Pull? Yes.
Councilmember McCandless asked for item number 10 to be pulled. Councilmember Stewart asked for number 26 to be pulled. Councilmember Stewart also asked for number 27 to be pulled.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Hobart, you asked for number 29 to be pulled.
Yes, sir.
And Councilmember McCandless, you asked for 23771 to be pulled. Did I miss anyone, or did anybody else have any other interest? Okay. We will make a motion to, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on any of these items? If not, we'll approve the consent agenda items that were not pulled, and then we will talk about those items that were pulled individually. With that, please call the roll for the consent agenda, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda without the items pulled was approved seven to zero. Councilmember Stewart, you pulled item number two. You have the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Okay, thank you very much, councilmember. You read my mind.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve that. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions. Hopefully, the city manager can answer.
Please proceed.
The first is a question we get every time we buy cars from an out-of-state dealership or not in Independence. Can you just give a brief synopsis of why that occurs, and we don't buy something here locally?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, and thank you for the question. Probably the best analogy I can offer in light of many of our retirees being here tonight, if they were to try to go find insurance on us individuals, that's much different than what we're able to do as a city by having the purchasing power of so many individuals. That's the same situation for when we go to buy vehicles. By going in on a regional purchasing cooperative with other municipalities across the Kansas City metro area, we raise our purchasing power, thereby getting better pricing than what we would as a city just going and trying to purchase from, you know, whatever dealership. So this allows us to stretch the tax dollars that we collect farther and put those monies towards other uses within the police department.
Okay. I have three other questions. I'll try to do them all at once, then if you need help on them, just ask. Number one, how is it determined a vehicle needs to be replaced? Is it the mileage, just we're spending more money on repairs than it's worth? And then, what do we do with the old vehicles after we surplus them? And then, I, over the weekend, I was at the police department I work at, and I actually drove a Dodge, I'm sorry, a Dodge Durango for the first time. Have we ever did any cost analysis on what the price difference was between, like, maybe like a Dodge Durango or something else?
Yeah, so as far as knowing when to take those out of service, we look at mileage, we look at wear and tear on the vehicle, the cost of maintenance, and when that starts to reach a crossover point of being more than what the value of the car is starting to be. I will say, these cars go through kind of a life cycle with the police department, so the vehicles start in patrol. They are, as we've talked about before, used as the office, so the officers have their dashboard systems in there and their mobile data terminals, and so they have that function. But then, of course, you know, being used for pursuit, their vehicles are driven a lot more differently than all of us use for our own personal vehicles. Once they kind of start to reach that end of useful life within patrol, they start to shift for other purposes within the department. So maybe some of the special units have some use of it where they aren't having to do pursuits, but this is a vehicle that gets them to their meetings or about the community doing their job. And then eventually, these vehicles do reach an end of useful life where to continue maintaining them is no longer going to be as effective from a cost standpoint as purchasing new. So we do surplus those vehicles, and then public is able to bid on those and acquire them for their own private use, whatever that may be. and acquire them for their own private use, whatever that may be. In terms of looking at other options, we do test and evaluate different platforms pretty frequently. And if you noticed, we recently made that switch from some Chevys to the Dodge Charger platform, based in part on how our officers use those, but also from a cost standpoint as well. So we do try to stay pretty fresh on our evaluation and make sure we're both functionally and cost-effective getting the kind of cars we need.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on item number two? We have a motion and a second on item number two with no other discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number two.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number two on the consent agenda is approved seven to zero. That takes us to item number 10. Councilmember McCandless, if you'd please make a motion, and then we'll give you the floor to talk.
I move item number 10 for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager.
Please proceed.
So this item is for $3.3 million for tree trimming. I know that we pay for this every year, and this is an ongoing cost. Some years, I think we've even exceeded this budget. I just want us to really be thinking about long-term sustainability of the utility and having us be thinking about burying lines at every opportunity, because in 10 years, we will have spent $33 million, and we will continue to spend that as long as there are trees. So I'm hoping that that will be an item for consideration in the future.
Yes, I mean, as you stated, it's important that we do the preventative maintenance so that when we have the storms like we did a month or so ago, we try to minimize the damage that's done to our customers. But that said, it's in our business plan. A recent example for the council would be out at Little Blue Valley as the Eastgate Commerce Project is building out. That is being built with the intent, and will happen, of having those kinds of lines underground. So as we work through those now, there have been times where I know that that didn't happen, but we've expressed our expectation from the city manager's office to our IPL staff to work through undergrounding these utilities as we move forward through replacement or new construction.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure that there are situations where it doesn't make sense to bury them. It's through rock, et cetera, but any opportunity we have. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 10?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
We've had buried lines that suddenly popped up above the surface again off of 39th Street. And so when we make the, whatever, the decision to bury these lines, I want to make sure that these are lines that are going to stay buried and not have to pay to, again, raise them up and put them above. They're much more attractive underground. And the cost to commercial buildings and developers and things like that, that's a big burden too. So I hope that if we do take the initiative to bury more lines, that we take a different approach and make sure that where we're burying them, they stay buried and they don't wind up back up over the top of our.
I share your expectation.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else, other discussion on item number 10? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 10 passes seven to zero on the consent agenda. That brings us to item number 26. Councilmember Stewart, you asked for this item to be removed. If you could make a motion, and we'll look for a second, then we can proceed.
Motion to approve item number 26.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on item number 26. Councilmember, please proceed.
So I'll be kind of talking about number 26 and 27 together. So, Mr. City Manager, kind of just to sum this up. So one of these resolutions would basically do a report on whether or not we sell Independence Power and Light, and the other one, if we keep it and invest in it, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I've already decided, made up my mind, that I don't have any interest in selling Independence Power and Light. So I'm not about to vote to spend $300,000 for these consulting companies to do it for us. So I'll be voting no on both of them. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any further discussion on item number 26?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
DKMT, we addressed this study back in 2020. And it was to move forward with Phase Two. And they're, part of the reason why it was an issue with some on the council at that time was because they were staging it or presenting it as something that we should sell. I too share councilmember Stewart's position. I think the public utility needs to stay with the public. And so I'm against selling it, for sure. And we've underutilized it, and we need to do a better job with it. So I'm of the same opinion. I think, I think we're headed down the wrong path on this, so.
Well, I would just clarify to make sure. This is authorizing us to go negotiate contracts based on the six-one vote that the council took on April 5th to allow us to have these two firms come in, study this issue from the perspective of what does ownership retention look like? What does privatization look like? To present those findings and then engage in a however-long-as-necessary public engagement process leading up to a vote. And again, in accordance with that April 5th vote of the council.
And that's fair, that is true. But there's been some time between that vote and now. And guess who spoke during that time? Folks that show up in these meetings. And so I've heard their concerns, and I stand with them. I think we need to keep our utility.
Please proceed.
So IPL is the largest asset that the city has, and is enormous in its complexity in both that the number of employees it has, that the world of energy is changing so rapidly, and that it takes continuous investment in the security, in the resources, in the staffing to make that a going concern. And there's no question to everybody in this room, you need your utility, you need electricity. I am happy that we're having a thoughtful discussion, because this is an important issue. I look forward to hearing what our consultants have to say. I would ask that we bring item 26 and 27 to a study session so that we can understand what question, let me rephrase, how it is that you're going to approach this, since this is such an important item. I think having a better understanding of that will help people move forward to understand what we're going to do with the information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else have other comments on number 26 or 27? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, yes, so these two items are, for me, all about information. To understand options, to understand what needs to be put in place to make IPL a going concern for 20, 50 years. And so I'm, for me, these are about information. And, you know, to be able to get a competent review of the, of IPL and what the options are, that's what I'm really after here. And so I, and that's why I voted for the ordinance that was recommended, or the resolution that was mentioned earlier in April, and that's why I'll be voting for both of these.
Anyone else have other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. And I'll echo the comments of Councilman Fears. This is information only. The direction that we may go is still up in the air, at least in my mind, my opinion. There is absolute benefit for keeping a utility. We need to study and research what that out, but please, everyone, make no mistake, if we keep this, we are going to be spending hundreds of millions of dollars. That is a generational decision that everybody in here will be dead two times over before those debt services get paid off. And as fast as this energy industry moves, we need to have the information and the correct information, public engagement, to get the input to make those final decisions. Again, if we keep it, hundreds of millions of dollars, minimum, of investment with public engagement. So we want that input. You don't want the seven of us making that. We need your input and have the right information so we can make the best decision. So that's why I'll be supporting these two.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I appreciate all the comments, my fellow councilmembers. They certainly reflect the opinions, the beliefs that many of our citizens have. And we all know how good a job that the folks out at IPL do. We saw that during the last storm. So thank you for that. There will be a public vote at the end of this journey, so that this will not be the city council making a decision on what to do with all of our electric utility. It will be a vote for people. And I just wanted to make that very clear. In order to be informed, the council decided that we need experts to come in and help us get the highest level view that we can on what IPL should look like, what it could look like, and what it would look like if someone else owned it. There are so many parts and pieces to that, that this, it's a process that is beyond the council individually. It's beyond the PUAB, it's beyond regular people. No offense to anyone that knows the energy business, and there are some folks that do. And as we all know, it's been a struggle over the years for us to manage, from a council standpoint. So I will be voting for these. I believe they're necessary to help us understand the issues, to understand what a, really, a 21st century power company looks like. As we all know, you see it every day. EV this, EV that, solar panels, wind, drive to Denver, count the windmills. There used to be like 10, now there's like 10,000. So times have changed, and that's no criticism of anybody in this city. This is a reflection of simply the world we live in right now. It's much, the energy industry is a lot bigger than us and IPL. So I will be voting yes on these, and I appreciate all the, my councilmembers' opinions.
Any further discussion on item number 26?
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. You've heard two words tonight, spend, invest. Very different. Spending scares us, investing should excite us. Energy is evolving, it's changing. But it's not as simple as just plugging in a bunch of solar panels and EVs, or, and windmills. You know, energy, you have line loss, you have clean energy, you have unclean energy. You have a grid system that may or may not be able to handle. These are all the things that we need to talk about. But until we get to that place where we start talking about investment versus spending, I'm of the mindset that what we're doing now is we're spending, we're not investing in IPL. And it's got to change. So I don't know how this helps. You have to have a tremendous amount of trust in the seven people that are sitting up here that there's, that it's a clean and transparent system. That's up to you, you will ultimately get to decide it. But I just want to be clear, spending, investing. What we're talking about is investing.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number 26, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this item passes five to two. Item number 27, councilmember Stewart, you also pulled that one.
I'll just make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on item number 27?
I have no comment, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on item number 27? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number 27, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number 27 passes five to two. Councilmember Hobart, you pulled item number 29. Please make a motion, and then we'll proceed.
Motion to approve item number 25 on the consent agenda.
Second.
I mean, 29. I heard 25, I just want to make sure I have.
29.
29, okay, please forgive me, my ears are bad. So, item number 29, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Councilmember, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, you heard the comments of the citizen earlier. Could you just briefly describe what this money is for?
This is funding $25,000 that was recommended and then approved in the budget that was adopted by the council this past June. These funds do come from the city's tourism fund. In looking at jurisdictions, both regionally and then across the country, one of the things that we noticed was a partnership between the city and whatever the, you know, call it what you will, a local downtown association or square association, I mean, different names for different things, but all with the same intent, which is to help promote, at a local level, the events, activities, and ongoing efforts of that downtown business group to draw both residents of the city and visitors into that district. So this could be for anything like, you know, additional Sounds on the Square events, additional summer movie nights, additional special events like the Wine and Brew Walk or other. So really, this would be for that group to decide how best to utilize those funds. But there would be an expectation from the city that these funds would be, and that's part of what's envisioned in the agreement that's attached here. The group will track data about the number of events they have, the number of visitors that come to those events, so that we can use this year to gather information about the merits of this program and if and how we should continue that into the future. But trying to take a pilot project step with this this year, see how it goes, and potentially expand it moving forward based on the results and data that we see.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And obviously, in there, you didn't mention that it was money that would somehow be used to cover expenses for the model railroaders.
No, this would be strictly for the promotion, expansion, or addition of events for the community on the square.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Any further discussion on item number 29? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number 29.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number 29 passes seven to zero. This brings us to item 23771. Councilmember McCandless, could you please make a motion, and then you're free to.
Thank you. I move approval of 23771.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
So we are self-insured as a city, and that covers our employees and a portion of our retirees as well. And this is an ever-changing goal for what the budget adjustment will be required for insurance for our third-party administrator. And I just wondered if you could address that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And I do want to include in my comments a word of gratitude to the Staywell Committee, as well as the individuals who were part of the Special Health Insurance Review Committee. Last year, we took a look at a lot of different options about how to contain our costs with health insurance, given the rapid expansion of that expense, but also knowing that's a very important and necessary benefit of the city. We did a lot of work that, one of those recommendations included a 10% premium increase. This is coming in slightly below that, at 9.83%. One of the things that the group should also be commended for is making sure that One of the things that the group should also be commended for is making sure that this recommendation was timely included prior to the budget. So, I want to thank the Stay Well Committee for that as well. Allowed us to build budget with a known expense in there instead of trying to retroactively build around that afterwards. So, you know, nobody certainly likes to pay more, but as the cost does go up, we've been able to contain and slow somewhat the rise in expense associated with our health insurance plan and help it remain solvent moving forward.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Are you rolling?
Yes. And item 23771 passes seven to zero. This brings us to our regular agenda. This will be our first public hearing. So, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on June 27th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a property at 140 East Farmer Street. The property is actually owned by the Community Services League of Jackson County. They wish to rezone this from a C2 to an R6 to establish single-family homes there. This is along the same Farmer Street where staff has had several city-initiated rezonings to correct some homes that were in various zonings back to R6 and keeping this basically the same as the residential neighborhood surrounding it. I have no new information to provide.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in, pardon me, anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to this item or information purposes only? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? Anyone speaking, wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to? With that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk?
An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial to District R6, Single Family Residential for the property at 140 East Farmer Street in Independence, Missouri.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Just for the record, I have spoken to some of the property owners there. There has been no objection to the corrective rezoning for this.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Are you rolling?
Yes. And this item passes seven to zero. This takes us to our second public hearing. We'll open that up. Please proceed, Mr. Arroyo.
Thank you again. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on June 27th of this year also. Planning Commission's vote was in favor of this rezoning. This is a project at the Boulder Square Development on the north side of 39th Street, east of Crackerneck Road. Project consists of 349 multifamily apartments. It's the development that'll be west of the Target there in the park, partially in the vacant J.C. Penney's building. Development will include amenities such as a pool, dog park, fitness center, and a community clubhouse. I have no new information to provide.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor or opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to this item? Please proceed.
Mike up 16501 East George Franklin Drive. I'm against this project, there's some issues. This developer doesn't even live here. I don't know if anybody's, we talked about all this vetting going on. Does everybody know that he's building and selling? He's not even offering leases, taking the project and all the money. What happens when these are not rented and we turn to Section 8 or subsidized rent out there? We've got a real overload over in the 3rd District as it is. Also, you know, where's the labor coming from? We using labor here, local labor, or we bringing them in? I know the case, Development Down by Bass Pro, was the one that said, hey, we're going to use everybody around there, all the local labor. They haven't used anybody. They're bringing them all in from Tulsa. This is another one of these things. Only, the only person I can say that's really done what they said they was going to do is North Point, and I'm very proud that they're using our labor and doing what they said they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
This is on the agenda as a new information-only
Okay.
public hearing. The full public hearing was held with the Planning Commission.
Okay. So, I made a mistake and I opened it up, so please forgive me.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And, Madam City Clerk, can you please read? Yep, you've got it.
23072, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial to District R30, PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at 17610 East 39th Street, South in Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just, just to give you some background, I was contacted by this developer out of Huntington Beach, California, who came in and we met for lunch, and he talked to me about building a 55 and older community, which our city needs. We need more housing available for our aging community. He showed me the rendering. It was very nice, and I supported it. I thought it was a great idea. If you're not sure where it is, it's the J.C. Penney's parking lot. So, it's really a mixed use of, they're wanting residential next to commercial. And, and I thought with the renderings that I saw, it was very nice. I told him I thought that was a good project. Didn't know how it was all going to work, you know, being mixed use, sitting next to a big strip mall. But, I was in favor of it. The last thing that we said to each other was, if you change anything or you want to discuss any changes, let me know. Let me know. So, I never heard a word. He took off, left, never heard a word from him. Went through planning and I'm going, wait a second, I'm listening to it. I'm going, when did we go from 55 and older to a 349-unit multi-unit, multifamily unit structure? And so, I'm listening and I'm asking the questions like, how many parking spaces? And I was told one and a half. Is that correct? Per unit?
So, it varies based on the unit, but the overall average is 1.2.
1.2.
Correct.
So, so 1.2, 80, now 80% of, and I'm going to ask you another question. 80% of them, just for clarification, 80% of the units are studio and one bedrooms. Is that correct?
The applicant is actually here to speak on that? I don't, was it, was it 60 or 80? I can, would that be okay if they came and spoke to that specific?
Absolutely. If you recommend it, we'll bring you forward. And if you could please introduce yourself, name of your company, your name, and where you're from. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tim Homberg, NSPJ Architects, 3515 West 75th Street, Prairie Village, Kansas. I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Robert Walquist, who is not being able to be here tonight. With the events happening in California, he was unable to get a flight out of the state because of the hurricane in the state tonight. To answer your question about the parking, if I may approach the council, this, this...
Can I, he said 1.2.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
I'm just asking, are the studio and one bedrooms 80% of the development?
So, in this, we basically have the percentages of, you know, 10% studios, 50% one bedrooms, 18% one bedroom plus den.
How many?
18% one bedroom plus den, 50% one bedroom, and 10% studio. So, between those three, you know, we're basically, you know, 78%
Okay.
are less than two-bedroom.
Okay. And, and so, and I appreciate you clarifying that. So, my last discussion with him on the phone was last week. He called me. We talked a little bit. And I asked him, I said, are you going to be like one of our other good developers in this city, North Point, who would like to do another project in the 3rd District, which I think is a wonderful idea? Because they're here. They have their own leasing, they manage everything, they build, develop, and own it. And they, and they hold it. And he said, no, I'm going to build it and sell it. That's, that was his words to me. So, I said, well, what happens if we can't lease these homes? What happens to these empty units in order to be attractive to sell? Do we end up getting them subsidized? This is the fears of the people that live in my district. We don't, we're not looking for subsidized housing. And I really, he had no answer for that. So, I was disappointed that, number one, he didn't contact me, didn't come back and tell me about the changes. I don't think that this is a good project for the district. It's a mixed use. I have vendors who are not happy at the, the commercial businesses in that area. And I, and I, we have developers in our city, some in this room, that, that I would love to see have the opportunity to, to develop and build projects like these and keep this revenue here in this state. Use our labor in this city. Like in North Point, if there's an issue or a problem, I know I can call Chris and we can talk. That, that means a lot to me as a, as someone who represents the district in this city that has a lot of projects going on. So, that being said, I asked him to consider meeting with us for another 30 days and just let's, let's review some of these details and see if we can smooth some of this out. And then, of course, he texted me before the meeting and said, I'm not coming, we're just going to go ahead and vote, which was disappointing. So, listen, keeping our economy growing in this city is very important to me. Keeping profits off of any development and sale in this state is very important to me. You see what the advantage of profits being kept in the city by local businesses? We partnered with one and you got a canine out of it. That's huge. And I, I know that we want to develop more housing in this city. I do too. But, I want it to be the right kind of housing, I want it to be the right kind of project that makes sense for our local economy, our state economy, and our labor that is very important in our city. We want our people working. And I had promises from Case Development in Tulsa, and they have not fulfilled that. And we are seeing out-of-state workers coming in and working on that project. And that, to me, is a problem. I want our people working and our economy growing. This type of project is a good project, but I'm disappointed with the way it was handled and the way it came down. So, if my colleagues will support the 3rd District and either ask for 30 days or vote no, with me, I would appreciate it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Steinmeier. If I may address some of your comments kind of in the list. First, addressing the local representation. Obviously, NSPJ Architects were a 62-year-old company, been in Kansas City the whole time. So, we are a local company. We've represented literally all of the multifamily developers in the city. We're going to be coming to you with North Point here in a few months. You know, we represent them as well. And so, we represent all of the quality developers in the city. That is why this developer came to us, is because they wanted to do a quality project in this city. They saw the opportunity to take advantage of a project that was in a distressed area. There's a reason why the shopping center is not redeveloping, is because the whole area of Big Box is just shifting. You know, it should have redeveloped into something by now, but it hasn't. And so, there are other parts of the metro area where they are actually, they are tearing down defunct parts of strip areas and replacing it with this new era of mixed use. Target loves it. We were on a call with the National Target people late last week, and they are over the moon for it, because guess what? They've got literally over 500 people within a five-minute walking distance to utilize their stuff. That's great for the city, because guess what? That's sales tax dollars, literally within walking distance that's going to utilize those services. And in regards to local representation as well, Denise Yates with Yates and Company, they are going to be a partner along this whole pathway. Yates and Company has been here as a owner's representative. They're also going to be the leasing agent. They're also going to be managing the property during the time that it is open and the duration that it is going to be here. And so, that is going to be local representation. So, if you have an issue with anything that's going on the property, Denise there will be on your speed dial and you can say what's going on here. I think I just want to touch base real quick on, you know, the parking issue, because that was something that was brought up with the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And I think that was something that we wanted to help to everybody understand. Because something in regards to parking, you know, the plan, you know, there was discussion at Planning Commission where parking was wanting to get higher and higher, you know, upwards of like, you know, two parking stalls per unit. There's nowhere, except for the city of Leewood, in the entire Kansas City metro area, that has a parking count that high. What this creates is large seas of parking. We've talked about other areas where we want to preserve green, we wanted to, you know, be able to be kind to the environment. Cities like Overland Park right now are actually, they just recently approved an ordinance where they revisited their parking study across the board from multifamily to residential to commercial and shrunk it all down to be more in tune with what's happening. So, to that degree, the Planning Commission said, we want to know exactly what's going on with local developments and newly minted multifamily projects and how their parking is being utilized. So, we went out there, sat in their parking lot, and counted cars and counted empty stalls. Two projects that we looked at were, the first one was the, get my glasses on here, the Trinity Woods Apartments, which is a very close by project, 240 units. They had 418 built stalls for 1.74 parking ratio. What we count, we is basically at weeknight, in the evening, basically about as full as you're going to get. 60% full. So, you take that basically to effectively 250 actually-used parking stalls. That equates to a 1.04 per unit actual parking usage. The second one we looked at was the more closer project, which was the Azure Apartments. Their actual units are 280 with 293 parking stalls for a 1.04 parking ratio. Their parking at the weeknight ratio was only 70% full of actual cars. So, that's only 205 stalls. That's a 0.73 per unit actual use of parking. These are, these are real numbers. These are not multipliers or stuff that's written in ordinance. This is actual use of parking on two real-time projects. And so, what we want to know, what we want to, you know, alleviate anyone's concern is that the 1.2 is a number that is a comfortable number that we feel can be utilized as a fallback. And obviously, part of the packet that we are going to distribute is right adjacent to us at the, the rest of the mall. The tenant right next to us is setting in a little, if any utilized, field of parking, field of parking. I mean, we kept, again, at the high point on a Saturday when it should be heavily utilized, maybe five rows of parking up against the side of the building were used. And literally, 100 rows, 100 rows were not used. And so, that's why we want to say that we've got options. If there are overflow, then we've got options to basically work out a deal for shared parking with the adjacent owners if it becomes an issue. And I know that was one of the concerns of the adjacent condo owners, that they didn't want stuff flowing out into their streets to the north. That that becomes an issue, they're going to call Denise and we're going to work out a parking agreement that gets that taken care of immediately.
So, your comparisons, are these mixed-use comparisons or are these standalone multifamily units?
These are standalone multifamily units. I mean, a parked car is a parked car.
So, that, so this, but to keep in mind, this is a mixed... So, that, so this, but to keep in mind, this, this is a mixed-use facility. You've got commercials still going on, Christmas time, you're going to see a, a great influx of cars, uh, we hope, because the retail businesses, they plan for those events.
Sure.
Uh, you're, you're talking about adding close to 400 cars.
For?
For parking, one point. You've got 349 units, correct? And you say 1.2, so we're, we're going to be somewhere around there. I can't imagine everybody has one car that lives in, in these units, so. But if that's, if that's your contention, that's fine. I, I just, I have some concerns about the parking. I think that that's what people are, are most concerned with, because it is a mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then my other big concern is just the fact that he's an out-of-state developer wanting to develop and sell. And, and I don't believe that our city needs to see the profits go to California. We need to keep it here in, in Missouri, so.
No, and I, and I can definitely sympathize with that.
I mean, you heard, you heard one of the issues raised by one of my colleagues about buying police cars in Kansas. I share that sentiment, by the way. I want our workers working, and I want our economy growing, and I want our tax dollars staying here. And I want our investments to stay here.
Right. I think one thing you can-
And I'm pretty hardline on that. So, I, I appreciate that you're in Kansas.
Right.
I, I'm protecting a third district. I'm looking at it and wanting to move the city forward in smart ways, not just, we've got to have housing, we'll just throw anything against the wall and hope it sticks.
No.
We can do better.
No. And I think what also makes us quintessentially different than a case developer, Tulsa's three and a half hours away. It's going to be really hard to uproot a California construction company and California subcontractors going across the Rocky Mountains and bring them here. We are going to use a local construction company to build this project.
How much of that is going to be, um, where you commit to seeing, uh, union shops? How much of that work will go towards, uh, the union shops that are, we, Independence has a lot of representation here of our trades, and we want to make sure that those guys are working, because they're missing out on opportunities building in my district and by Bass Pro at the Case Development, which they said they would do, and we haven't seen it. So, are they going to commit to using, using any of the, uh, the trades, the union shops?
That's up to the general contractor and the developer. Unfortunately, I have no authority to that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he wouldn't, he didn't answer that question for me either. So, um, okay. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I know my position, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I, I wanted to just remind us that we have lots of communities in Independence, and I am the mother of, uh, young adults who are looking for their first apartment so they can move out of my house. And so, I am delighted that we are looking to build studios and one bedrooms. That's kind of that graduate group who are growing up and moving out of their parents' homes and, and into these first apartments. Mr. Arroyo, would you be able to tell me the price range on these apartments? Because that question has come up.
So, the applicant indicated basically these are going to be between 13 and 21 or 2,200 per unit.
Very good.
Please, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Yates. I live at 1444 Grand Boulevard, KCMO 64106. I'm, uh, the-
And who do you work for?
I'm sorry?
Who do you work for?
Yates and Yates Co. I'm a founder, along with my partner Nicole, who's also here. We currently have a little over 5,000 units under contract that we've been working on at different levels. We work with development, we work with lease-up, we look, work with stabilized properties. I want to just give one other piece of information, I think, to bring to, that was brought up earlier from, uh, someone speaking. I've actually worked on two different projects in Independence. 23 years ago, I believe it was, I did cornerstone apartments of 420 units. And, uh, most recently, I was involved with the lease-up for Azure. So, um, I'm very familiar, I'm also very familiar with North Point. I've known them for many, many years, and, and our products are very similar. Using NSPJ is also, um, I've done multiple projects with them. So, the rents, we spent quite a bit of time wanting to be a part of this community, not just build apartments and sell them and move on. So, we really worked very hard at picking floor plans to fit the community, to fit the price point, so that people that live in Independence can afford the units that we're building in the community. So, um, our studios, um, through, we have studios through a three-bedroom, and the price point is from 1095 to 1995. And the reason why we can be in that price point is because we, again, spent an enormous amount of time designing the floor plans that can accommodate a smaller, a smaller version to hit the price point we can to be able to build in today's market. So, the developer is, um, not here to just build and move on and sell. As we know, all apartments are built and, uh, sometimes they sell, sometimes they're a hold. There's a lot of variables that go to it. But one thing is for sure, is when you build a Class A product, no matter who owns it, the objective is to lease it up, stabilize it, become part of the community, and be a long-term resident. So, um, I wanted to just clarify that the price point is very important for us, and we want to make it affordable for everyone to be able to live there that, that chooses to.
And my, my last question is, um, apartment buildings all across the country are really moving to these mixed use, where you have people who are living close to shopping opportunities and restaurants, um, and, and is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things we heard at the door a lot was, we want stable businesses, we want restaurants that stay, we want people to be able to shop in Independence, and that requires density. So, having people who are here to support those businesses means the businesses are there for the people who don't live in the apartments but want to shop there too. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just, I just want to clarify.
Yes, please.
Just one thing. I'm, I'm only quoting what the developer told me last week. His intent is to develop and sell. So, I'm not making that up. That was his words to me last week. And that was, that's where I, I took a hard pause. So, that's not what we're looking for in the community, is a develop and sell mentality. So, just, just to be clear, I'm not making that up. That was from him, him, from the developer, the owner himself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I don't know whether to address this question to the city manager or Mr. Arroyo.
You can start with city manager, and he can, he'll direct you.
He can defer a fee.
Absolutely right.
So, um, you know, we had a housing study done, what was it, a year, year and a half ago? Is that correct?
In that timeframe, yes, sir.
And, and so, does this particular development fit into that housing study as we, as it was presented at that time?
One of the things, and Mr. Arroyo, you can fill me in on the specifics, but one of the things that's referenced in the, in the housing plan that we directly, uh, implemented then in the council's action plan was to vigorously encourage through a wide variety of actions, the development of sustainable and lasting housing options for all individuals and families. So, it talked about needing a diversity of housing stock type at different price points, et cetera. Rick, are you, you in a position to be able to add any more color to that?
Yes. So, the housing, this does fit within the housing study. The housing study really looked at various different types of development, from single-family, from high-end single-family, middle-grade, lower-end, cost-effective, single-family, as well as, um, multifamily. And it talked about different types of multifamily. You have your duplexes and fourplexes and eightplexes, and then this will fit into that, kind of that, what we call the R-30, higher-density, um, multifamily. In that range, there's a price range. There's a price range between the 1,200 and 1,800 dollar type of developments. So, this project fits within that, and basically, it goes over a 20-year span. They, they looked at what is the needs for Independence over the next 20 years. This does fit still within that. Now, we are kind of getting close to a, a cap on that, basically, in terms of this price range type multifamily development. As you're, you're correct, senior housing is another, uh, I think there's like an additional 1,300 units that basically the housing study said that we would need over the next 20 years, but this does still fit within this price range of multifamily within the housing study.
And, um, the planning commission approved this, correct?
They did, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, you know, I don't have, uh, I, I appreciate the opportunity that developers bringing this to, uh, us to consider. I mean, it's, uh, you know, I'm just guessing what that kind of a, a project costs to build, but my guess is it's in the 50 to 60 million dollar range, something like that. And to bring that kind of money into our community is important. Whether it gets sold or not, um, it's going to get sold to someone that still has to operate it in such a way to make it profitable and make it, um, a viable entity for going forward. So, I don't have a great deal of concern whether it gets, I mean, real estate gets bought and sold every day of the year, and so, I don't have a lot of concern about that. Uh, I appreciate the information that's been shared.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
May roll in?
Yes. And the item passes four to three. Uh, this takes us to the third public hearing. I'll open the board there. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
Thank you. This, uh, special use permit was considered by planning commission on June 27th as well. This is a, uh, planning commission did vote in favor of this, uh, special use permit. This is a home in Manor Oaks subdivision built in the early 1970s. It's, uh, been used as a single-family home since that time. The applicant now wishes to use it as a bed and breakfast. This property has been used as a, um, bed and breakfast since 2020, so they are correcting a code violation with it. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. Uh, that'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Uh, if I may address the city manager.
Please proceed.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, Mr. Arroyo was kinder than I might have been, and I'm about to be. Uh, it's my understanding that the applicant got caught illegally operating an Airbnb in Manor Oaks. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. My point is made. Uh, the neighbors are not happy with this, the members of the HOA are not happy with this, they've held meetings on it. And on top of that, this person operated an Airbnb, not like we haven't heard this story before, without, uh, any consideration for the time and expense that the city has to go to, to help maintain businesses. So, I will be asking, uh, I will be voting no on this and would certainly ask my fellow council members to join me. Thank you.
Anyone else other further discussion?
And Mr. Mayor? Just, just a question. I'm not sure, um, I, I, who might want to answer this, um, one of my colleagues here, but isn't this the, um, the item that we got information on recently that said that, um, that, that subdivision had decided, that you had voted to not allow, um, bed and breakfast in their, in their subdivision, and that's against their HOA rules? Isn't that correct? Am I, am I, am I?
Mr. City Manager?
Do I have the right, the right one, or am I thinking of something else?
Jeremy Cooper, City Councilor. Uh, yes, that is my understanding regarding this subdivision. Uh, that was addressed at the, the public hearing, that it, they weren't, they had clarified their rules, uh, regarding, uh, this type of, of business, and that they were, you know, attempting to enforce it on the property owner. Uh, what was stated at the public hearing at the time, uh, the planning commission heard was that the, the city isn't subject to the, the HOA regulations and guidelines. Those are between the, the property owners. So, that, that, I, I believe is-
I wondered about that.
Is something that is going on.
Okay.
Uh, but, and the planning commission was, was told about that at the time, but again, that, that, those technically, that those aren't a part of, of the city code, and those don't apply to the evaluation before you tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, the declarations, those, those that, uh, the HOAs bring forward as part of their, um, their plans, the city reviews those and approves those, correct? The declarations. If they're brought forward as part of it, I, other cities they are, so I know we, I'm here, no, but other cities they are. If, if a developer brings forth, um, you know, a, a plan to develop an area that, that sometimes the declarations, the homeowner declarations are put in as part of that package. Is that, is, was that the case in this particular development?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Because oftentimes, we overlook the fact that, that the city does approve HOA declarations from time to time, so.
So, that is, that is correct. So, with the new subdivision, we do require for typically forbearance of, um, things like detention ponds, that sort of thing, that they do provide an HOA covenants. In this situation, I, I believe that they were updating it to, to exclude this type of a thing, not necessarily from the original, um, HOA covenants that they had in place.
Okay. So, they, so they do provide that information as part of their?
Uh, we don't necess, we're not necessarily privy to any of the updates that they may do-
Okay.
As a board, like an HOA board, they may update their, their, um, their, you know, whatever they decide to change it to. But initially, with the new subdivisions, we do require them to provide HOA.
Okay.
And Mr. Arroyo, there, some folks were asking about hearing, so make sure you, you get to the microphone, please. You're welcome. Uh, anyone else other discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please read the second reading of this ordinance, please.
23 dash 073, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 11913 East Marbeck Trail in Independence, Missouri.
Okay. Uh, this is the second reading. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
No.
May roll in?
No. And 23 073 fails zero to seven. This takes us to our fourth public hearing. I will open this. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
Thank you again. Uh, this, uh, rezoning was considered by planning commission on Ju, July 11th of this year. Planning commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. Uh, this is a property that contains a single-family house. Uh, it was zoned R1 back in 1965. Our records show that in May of 1990, it was changed to an industrial zoning. Uh, given the property size and limited access off of 291, the applicant wishes to use this as a single-family residence, uh, so this is what the rezoning back to R6 is for. So, I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
23 dash 074, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 700 South M-291 Highway in Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none. Pardon me. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
May roll in?
23 074 passes.
You need to say yes. You need to vote.
Oh, uh, yes, please forgive me. Uh, but I was planning to vote yes, and it passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. I just assumed you knew. I apologize. Uh, that brings us to non-ordinance items, 23 772.
A resolution?
Thank you. Please proceed.
23 772, a resolution directing the city manager to review the city code of ordinances and any other policies or procedure currently in effect regarding tow service, and to provide recommendations for further action related to these items by December 11th, 2023, requested by Councilmember Bryce Stewart.
23.
No, that's, I'll stop there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
I'd like to move to refer this to a study session, to hear all the discussion about it before we, and there's quite a bit to this, and so I'd like to hear more about it than really, I think, warrants in, in our council meeting, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion as second to refer this to a study session. Any further discussion on moving this item to a study session?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I don't know if it really needs to go to a study session. I think it's pretty clear. However, I will, I will not object to the council members' request. I'll go ahead and vote yes on that.
Okay. So what I heard you, council member, is you would be okay with this going to a study session?
I would be okay. I don't really understand the need for it, but I will honor, you know, the council members' request, and I won't, if he thinks it needs to go, then I'll, I'll vote yes on it. I won't object to it.
Okay. Any further discussion to move this to a study session for further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. We've got a motion as second to move this item to a study session. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three seven seven two to move it to a study session.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
May Roland?
Yes, and the item passes six to one to move it to a study session. That brings us to twenty-three seven seven-three. Please proceed.
Twenty-three seven seven-three, a resolution directing the city manager to research opportunities for housing prisoners at the new Jackson County detention facility, and to provide recommendations for further action related to these items by December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and that's requested by Councilmember Bryce Stewart.
Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we all know, Jackson County, Missouri is building a new detention center right off of Forty Highway. And I've heard from a pretty well-placed source that, well, everybody knows Kansas City is going to get involved in this, possibly housing some of their prisoners there. And I, I've also heard that Clay County may get entering negotiations, maybe housing theirs, making it a truly a regional-type jail. And as we all know, we're in the need of housing here in Independence, just like a lot of places are. So I would just like to ask that the city manager enter, enter into talks with Jackson County to maybe see if we can work something out. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I wondered about that, Councilmember Stewart. Your intent for this is to make sure we get in line in time to reserve beds in the event that it is opened outside of Jackson County?
Absolutely. I, they got a lot of room down there. They're going to have a lot of room for expansion if need be, and that's, I just want to make sure we're, we enter negotiations in time.
I under, I understand what you're saying now. I, I've heard some of the same things, and I'd even heard that the county was going to keep their facility closed to other organizations, but I can't imagine they'll end up doing that, if, if and when it gets built. So I'll vote yes on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Since we're talking about this, there was a comment and discussion made earlier under council, or under citizen comments, reading from an email that the city manager has sent out, that Johnson County has reopened their male dorm this week, and so they are, again, receiving our, our individuals that need to have some extra stay time. So we are doing that. We are working to look at different opportunities to take our, our inmates for lack of a better word, to get them sheltered, so.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else? Further discussion on item twenty-three seven seven-three? With no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three seven seven-three.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
May Roland?
Yes. Item twenty-three seven seven-three passes seven to zero. This brings us to item twenty-three seven seven-four, resolution to make amendment to the city council rules. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, what?
Do I need to read it?
No, you're right. It's fine. Councilmember Fears?
I'd like to move to amend the proposal that, as it's printed, what I'd like to amend is to, in section six point four, delete the words, "At the study session, three members must vote to move that action item to a regular meeting agenda." I'd like to replace that with, "One count, one member of the council can add an item to the study session agenda. Following discussion at a study session, one member of the council may request the item be added to a regular meeting agenda." If I get a second, I'd like to speak to that.
Okay. And please proceed if you want to speak to it.
Second?
Oh, yeah, we've got a second. We've got a motion in a second. Please proceed.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that, you know, I don't have a lot of difficulty with the issue in the way it was originally proposed, and the reason I say that is that my general feeling is that if I present something to this council and, at a study session, and if following that study session, I can't get two additional council members to agree it's worth our time, then perhaps it's not worth our time to consider. However, I realize not everybody is in agreement with that point of view, so I offer this amendment in the spirit of compromise. I also know that there has been discussion about adding language that would allow citizens to speak to the items at the study sessions. My feeling about this is that I'd rather have the citizens have the benefit of hearing our discussion at a study session, and be able to ponder that, our discussion and what they hear, before they sign up to speak. With this scenario, they can hear our discussion on a topic, consider it, and sign up to speak to it at the next meeting the following week. They also have the opportunity to reach out to any of us to discuss it personally. So either way, there's plenty of opportunity to hear from the citizens before we vote on an issue, and so that's why I'm making this amendment. Thank you.
Amendment, okay. We've got a motion and a second on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just to clarify, so we take it to study, to the study session, and any council member can recommend that it goes forward without a vote? Is that right?
That's correct, as I understand it. Is that how you understand it?
Well, that's how I read it. I'm just wondering, why do we need that? If, if it's being proposed as a business item for our agenda, why do we need to have one person recommend it? Essentially, that's what we're doing to get it on the agenda right now. So to me, it's a, it, it just, a couple of issues. It, it's not necessary, number one. Number two, you're, we're changing how we're doing the study session, which means you're going to have to provide more rule changes, as been stated by several people involved tonight. So it's not just as clean as, we just put it out there, we discuss it, one council member recommends it. That's, essentially, we're just recommending a, a resolution or ordinance, or as we've heard it called, business items, to go on the agenda now. So I, I don't understand why this amendment is necessary.
Please proceed.
I, as I stated at the, the study session, this gives an opportunity for deliberation and questions in a forum that's a little less formal than this, to be able to ask for financial considerations and legal considerations, and to be able to, you know, share the benefit of other people's thinking to make any modifications necessary. I certainly don't pretend that if I bring a resolution forward that I have all of the wisdom to make good recommendations, and I really do appreciate the input that I get from my colleagues. I think that having it in a study session allows us to be able to bring forward the best piece of either ordinance or resolution for the actual vote. So I appreciate being able to ask questions and have the thoughtful deliberation that people are expecting of us. I don't have any problem with it being just one person, same person who brings it forward to a study session, then puts it on the agenda for a vote. I just really am looking for good thoughtful discussion, because that's what is expected of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that certainly, that was certainly the intent of this amendment, is to provide an opportunity for that, that thoughtful discussion at a study session, not be, you know, in a, in a situation where we're going to be leading to a vote that particular night, but then, you know, have an opportunity to discuss it, think about it, kind of put it together in a better way if needed. Maybe it doesn't need it, but, and, and then move it on to a meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I agree with most of the, this amendment proposed by Councilmember Fears. However, I think if we're going to discuss, and, and, and so in principle, I'll, I will, I will vote for this, but just in a different form, because I think it could be valuable to have citizen input when we're about to discuss an item, and I know that Councilmember Stewart has also prepared an amendment that includes that possib, that includes that requirement. So that, for example, if we had a, an idea for loggers, that their representative would be able to speak at a study session, and I think that's helpful in the discussion when we're trying to determine whether or not to pursue a new law or legislation or some action. I think, I think it's helpful to hear from the citizens early, early on, especially for the folks that take the time to come out on Monday nights and participate in our council meetings. So not against the, the, the core meaning of Councilmember Fears' amendment, I'm going to vote no on this one, and I will support Councilmember Stewart's amendment, should, should we get that far.
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Please proceed.
I will echo Councilman Hobart's reading the two, no offense to Councilman Fears, reading the two side to side, that the two that I would be most favorable with would be Councilman Stewart's amendment, who informed for reasons that have been stated. Councilman Stewart and I had talked, not extensively over the weekend, but some over the weekend, about our thoughts and concerns, and I know I've spoken with you, Mayor, over the last week. So my position is, is set. So with that, I'll be supporting Councilman Stewart's amendment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote on this amendment right here, and Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
No.
Hobart?
No.
May Roland?
Yes, and this amendment fails three to four. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I have an amendment that I'd like to, actually, I have two that I'd like to present, but I'll do-
Okay.
I'll do them one at a time. The first one's, I'm going to change the wording to, "All council-requested action items must first be prevented at a study session prior to being added to the regular agenda. One member of the council can add an item to the study session agenda. Public comment will be allowed on any council-requested action items that appear on a study session with the same rules as a regular meeting."
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on this amendment. Any further discussion?
Clarification?
Please.
So in your mind, would the count, would the, the public comment be before or after the, the discussion item? Because now we have our, and it speaks to, you know, the same rules as a regular meeting. Well, that's at the beginning of the council meeting, so I'm not sure I understand how that's going to work.
It would be the beginning of the council meeting. It's the same rules. The mayor would ask in advance if-
That's why, well, nevertheless, that's why I propose something different.
Please proceed.
Well, I, I, again, this requires a few rule changes for study session. I mean, if we're going to allow the, number one, if the public comes to a study session to listen, I think there's an obligation for them to be able to speak and for us to listen to them. And if we're doing this, this informal setting that's not council meeting, that's not a council meeting, then essentially, if you're opening it up to allow people to speak in a study session, you might as well just call it a town hall. I mean, that's what we're, we're, we're going to have. And we're going to allow citizens to speak. As issues come up, they should be allowed to come up and approach it. And I wouldn't be opposed to it if they want to ask us direct questions, and we should be able to interact and give direct answers. And, and I think that that, that is what we're, if we're going to change, don't call it a council meeting, don't call it a study session, let's just call it a town hall, and we'll discuss the issues in front of them. And rather than us being the talking heads, let's do what we're elected to do and listen to what they're telling us and how they feel. That's my opinion. I'll be voting no.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stewart, would you accept that they would be limited to the topic of the study session, so that it's not broad-ranging on any issue in the city?
Yeah, that's what the amendment says. It would only be allowed for items that appear on a study session, or public, on council-requested action items. So it has to be council-requested action items.
Okay. But the same rules as a regular meeting are that it could be any item. So I just-
Well, it says council request, it would be the same rules as studies, but only on council-action requested items.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. In regard to being able to approach the city council and speak, there is some idea to have control, a controlled, that's a lack of a bad word there, but have a meeting that you can run well, discuss well, have exchange of ideas well. Now, for citizens to be able to come and speak with us, I know I hold community meetings. I've held several. I have one coming up Thursday. So there's plenty of opportunity. I think I pride myself extensively by getting out there in the community, working and discussing it, to have that access to people. They can have access to me. So that's part of being a council person, of being able to work it outside of these confines of these hours. So I would put it more onto our council to get out there in the community and work and have those meetings and discussions. That's just part of it.
So what's your recommendation on this amendment, if I may ask you?
I'm voting for it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood, so thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a question maybe for Mr. Culver, in that, do you see any conflict in what we've talked about relative to the language in this, and the idea that it only would apply to items that were council-requested items? Is that the way you would interpret that as well? Just, just want to make sure.
To clarify, you're asking about the, the amendment, current, the current amendment that Councilman Stewart has put forward?
Correct.
Yes. So, so the current amendment, as I'm reading it, and I, which I think is the same version that you all have, says that public comment will be allowed on any council-requested action item that appears on a study session agenda with the same rules as a regular meeting. So what I, what I read that as, is that, that public comment at a study session would be limited to council-requested items. So you would have to be speaking on a council-requested items to be able to speak under public comment. So if that was, you know, if there's other items on the study session that, again, are, you know, essentially brought forward, you know, from the city manager's office, then those would not be eligible for public comment at a study session.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that interpretation, you know. I guess my perspective is, is it's not exactly what I was looking for on this amendment, but it's better than the other, you know, than what we had before us before, so I'll be supporting this one.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Thank you. And I would also point out, this does not restrict the citizens' voices by any stretch to be able to bring an item to the council member, to the council for discussion. I would think this would actually give it more avenues for public comment. And I would be remiss to say that any emergency item, if there is, we still have the ability of, for council people to request to have an item put on for consideration in case of-
in case of said emergency.
And even call an emergency meeting?
And even call, correct, and, and you can still even call an emergency meeting, so, and we've done that several times over the past year, so those are tools that are still at, at reach, that does not limit the voice of the, the people.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I just need to be clear, so if this passes, we're going to have to make rule changes to have a different type of study session, correct? That involves public comment. Now, let me just be real clear, I'm not saying that we do a town hall and you just come and you just ask any question you want, it has to be germane to the topic, but they should be allowed to ask questions and they should be allowed to speak. If you put them in the front, then how do they listen to our discussion first and then have questions to ask, or if you put them at the end, you know, basically you're, they have to wait until we go through all of our points of interest. My question is, if we're doing that type of a study session, we have to change the rules to accommodate that, is that correct?
Mr. Cover?
Well, if, again, depending on what you all end up with, well, what we're going to do is a review of all the applicable sections to see if there's any changes that need to be made, so we can't obviously contemplate every, every scenario that might be there, but yes, if, if you, no matter which of these you approve, we'll be doing a review of the other sections to see if we have any recommendations regarding other changes, and that may include clarifying the language on study sessions.
Just makes you wonder how we got anything done before now, doesn't it?
Actually, this discussion, I think, makes it the point that all of this should have gone to the study session first in order to get it clarified before we brought it to this body in order to have it adjusted, so, uh, anyway, that's a comment that I have. Anyone else? Further comments or discussions on the second amendment? Uh, with no further discussion, please forgive me. No further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this vote is just for this amendment, not for the final rule change.
That's correct.
Correct.
I'm glad, that's a great clarification, you're absolutely right, so this is just for the second amendment offered by Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion or clarification? With no further discussion or clarification, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the second amendment.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and Councilmember Stewart's amendment passes six to one.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I have one other amendment.
Okay.
There was some conversation earlier by a speaker about who requested this, and if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you're the first one that requested this originally, is that...
That's correct.
Okay.
And we've stated that publicly before.
Yes, so in the subject line, where it says twenty-three dash seven-seven-four, a resolution to make an amendment to the city council rules a procedure, I would like to amend that to state by Mayor Rory Rowland.
Where's your, I'm looking for what page your amendment's on.
It's on, it's going to be, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, in the subject line, the title line, it would just say requested by you.
Okay, yep, I'm good with that, perfect.
Second.
Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on Councilmember Stewart's, uh, second amendment.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, thank you. Any other amendments?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, other further discussion or ideas? Any further discussion? Yeah, that's where we're at now, if I understand it correctly, I just want to make sure that everybody's on this. You bet.
Have we had a motion to, actually, have we had a motion and a second to approve it?
No, let's get a so- motion and a second to approve the entire item as it's amended.
I'd make a motion to approve it as amended.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve this item as amended, and it has two amendments that have been put on it. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Please proceed.
This, probably, it's probably no secret, this whole discussion has been rather frustrating to me, because it's just, I don't think it's something that we should be spending all this time on personally, but, uh, some of the things that were said a week ago concern me, um, there was a discussion, there was a comment made that we don't have a procedure that works, and, and that, and I, and I was troubled by that, and, um, so, I've been here a little over three years, and we've had a process that has worked, we've had a way of doing business that has worked, we've, we've moved this city through some pretty serious times, we had a pandemic, we had to get our health department back, we had, uh, lots of public safety issues we were trying to do, we had found money through the pandemic that we tried to allocate for more public safety, and we had very good discussions, but then when I, I heard what was said, it's like, for the last sixteen months, we just, apparently, we haven't got anything done up until this point, so I asked, uh, I sent it an email last Tuesday to our city manager, and if you just bear with me a second, this'll take a moment, and I asked him, since June of 2020, when Councilmember Hobart, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Perkins began a new term, and then myself, and the other council members who we served with in the last council, what ki- and, leading up to the last council meeting, what, what items of business have this city conducted? In other words, what has this council brought forward, and what have we voted on, and how did we move this city forward? And he put together an Excel spreadsheet and brought me back, uh, some information, some data, and so, in my head, it was like, well, this is, you know, fiction versus fact, so let's, let's just address it real quick, if I could, um, I'm just going to read this to you, and Mr. City Council, or, uh, Mr. City Manager, tomorrow will you send this to all of our colleagues, the Excel spreadsheet, and any, uh, any requests from our residents who want a copy of this?
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate this. So, your response, I thought, was very thoughtful, I appreciate you putting it together, um, and I'm just going to go through it real quick for you here, but since June 2020, there have been a total of seventy-two agenda items sponsored by city council members, thirty-nine of seventy-two have passed, that's fifty-four percent, better than the state, by the way, twenty-six were defeated, seven were postponed indefinitely or withdrawn. The individual council member with the most sponsored items is Councilmember Stewart, he had seventeen percent. Either individually or in partnership with other council members, I have sponsored thirty-four of seventy-two items, forty-seven percent, out of which nineteen have passed for fifty-six, uh, percent success rate, and so he broke down in a quick summary, and I'll just go through it, just so you know what your tax dollars have been paying for over the last three years. So, um, from top to bottom, Mayor Rowland, you've brought forth one agenda item, and it was postponed. Councilmember Fears, one, and it passed. Councilmember McCandless, one, and it passed. Councilmember Perkins, two, one passed, one postponed. Former Councilmember Huff was on at the time, total of three, two passed, one failed. Councilmember Hobart, three, three passed, hundred percent, very good. Former Mayor Weir brought six items, four passed, two failed. Councilmember DeLuca, God rest her soul, miss that woman every day, nine items, two passed, seven failed. Councilmember Stewart, twelve items, six passed, five failed, one postponed. Myself, nine items, four passed, three failed, two postponed. Count, former Councilmember Huff, Councilmember Perkins, and myself co-sponsored one item, it passed. Councilmember Stewart and myself, three items, three passed. Councilmember Stewart, former Councilmember Huff, and myself, four items, two passed, two failed. Council, former Councilmember Huff and myself, seventeen items, nine passed, se- six failed, two postponed. Most of these were around trying to affect health and public safety. That, that's what we did, and I wanted you to see that, I wanted you to know that we've had, we've had a process that has worked. We've had a, we've had a process that has worked, I don't think we have a process problem as much as we have a participation problem. We've got to bring ideas, we've got to have solutions, and we need proposed items to move this city forward. These items, all, and he, and in the Excel spreadsheet, he gives you every bill number, he gives you the title, and he tells you what happened. Very good job, I would encourage you to get it if you're wanting transparency, to see how the city has moved forward, and I, I just was, I was just a little offended at the fact that we were told that we have no process and we, we're not moving this city forward. We have moved this city forward in some very difficult times, and I make no apologies for my time on this council, and I appreciate the people I've served with and with the people I currently serve, but we definitely need more process, or less process and more participation. So, with that, I'll be voting no on this rule change.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I look at our process in the past this way. I had a friend of mine who, um, his wife went out, looked for a car, she selected a car, she went and then got her family, her mom and dad with her, they loved the car, she went and got her brother and sister, they followed her over in a car, and she had the paperwork, and she presented it to her husband and said, please sign this. What's he supposed to do? He's supposed to sign it. What has happened in this body, regardless of what anyone thinks or says, this has been the process that we've done. We have a process, we have a process where people bring things forward, and they've brought their family and their friends and their relatives and said, sign this, and there's been no discussion about, is it legal? There's been no discussion prior to that item, is it fit for the fiscal responsibility of the city? There's been no discussion about how any of this will work or impact. If you want us to continue to pass anything that somebody brings forward to this dais, that's fine. I look at this dais as an item where it's a business meeting, meaning that those items have needed to be reflected upon. Has legal had time to look at them and give it some thought? Has the finance manager had a chance to look at it and see what the impact would be? One of the most important questions of elected officials is to ask a very important question, what are the unattended consequences of this behavior or of this process? One of those is a great example, our health department. That item was brought forward the same way all the other items were brought forward, and we got rid of a health department, and then guess what, we said, oops, and we had to go back and bring it back. Now, had there been some discussion and study of the item, it probably would have been handled differently. So, let's just move at the speed of government sometimes and take a time to step back, analyze it, and see if it's in the best interest. Now, I know, Mr. Sorenson, you and I disagree on this policy, but, Mr. Sorenson, may I ask you a question? And the question is, Mr. Sorenson, when, when we were first elected, and you had an issue with regards to the health insurance, and, and if I'm correct, I'm the only mayor who has ever sat down with your executive board and listened for two hours to your concerns about your issues regarding your health insurance as soon as I was elected, is that true? Yes, and it was two hours, and, and then what we did...
Point, point of order.
Please let me finish my thought.
Well, you, you prevented me from, in a study session, from vetting a topic with a field expert, and, and you shut me down one time, I didn't allow it the second time.
Okay.
This is inappropriate to ask these questions from the audience in a council meeting, this is, this is not...
Point well taken, I withdraw my questions, but I will just state that I did meet with them for two hours, we worked on a process, and it was a process that was turned out to be very positive for the city. I'm a big believer in getting together and, and working with people and listening to them, and this has been changed because of the concerns that all of you have shared. It's not going to have three votes to take it forward, it's going to have one person bring it to a study session and one person bring it to a council meeting, but it allows us the opportunity during the study session to take a careful analysis of it and to see, is it really in the best interest of everyone here? If we are truly going to be representative of everyone, and not everyone is in this room, if we're going to be truly representative of everyone, we've got to also represent those people, the silent majority, that didn't come to the council meeting, of those people who have concerns about how our city moves forward, that they have concerns about, is this legal, is it appropriate, or do we want to just give someone, a city council, here, honey, please sign this, my family loves the car, I love the car, my family loves the car, oh, thirty-nine percent interest, I've got to sign it. I'm not quite sure that's how we want to conduct business in our city, um, and with that being said, uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the final bill.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have, I have just one clarification on that. First of all, you've not met, you've not met my wife, because she would tell me no, and, because she's smart enough to know there is a process. Believe it or not, before sixteen months ago in a new election, we did have vetting through our, our city staff, through our city councillor, things got vetted properly, we changed the process and went from no more Friday surprises to two weeks, and so it gave the city staff more time, they were overworked trying to get things done. We did that, we did that at somebody's request on this council. We have given two weeks to every issue, and my time is worth as much as anybody on this council, I look at these agenda items, I do my research, I look and I read, and if I have questions, I'll call, and I'll ask. So to act like we were the wild, wild west before you all showed up is just inappropriate. We, we were not, we did, we had a process, we followed that process, and we got things done, seventy-two items brought forward, we got our health department back, we fought for that, we worked the city through a very difficult time, we did that together, we did it legally, we did it the best way we could, we, we went through some dark waters that we had, nobody in, in government had walked through. So this idea that somehow the, the system was broken before you all showed up, it's, it's a little insulting, and I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm upset, I shouldn't be, but I think listening to the folks that came up and spoke tonight, if we're concerned about their voice, they overwhelmingly said no to this, and that's how I'm going to vote, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Pass.
McCa- McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Rowland?
Uh, I'll pass. Councilmember Stewart?
No.
So no, uh, the item passes seven, or, excuse me, I, yes, and my vote is a yes, and it passes five to two. Thank you.
People need to vote, you see what you get. Non-representation.
Please be respectful to the body. Please be respectful to the body. That brings us to ordinances. Madam City Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Twenty-three dash zero six eight, an ordinance amending section three point zero three point zero zero eight, dangerous dogs in section three point zero three point zero zero nine, vicious dogs of the independent city code.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I may address the city manager.
Sure.
Mr. Walker, I know the vicious dog amendment is that we are taking the discretion away from the judge, our municipal judge, so that if a dog is deemed vicious, that it will be destroyed. That's my understanding of this amendment. Is that correct?
Sir, I'm going to bring forward Christina Heinan, the Health and Animal Services Director, just to clarify, given the importance of the topic.
Very good.
Mayor and members of the council, my name's Christina Heinan, I'm Health and Animal Services Director. Councilmember Hobart, you are correct, that is the change to the vicious dog ordinance, is it would require destruction of the animal if the animal is deemed vicious.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that. That was, that was important to me early on, because I know how hard it can be for a person, judge or otherwise, to make that decision. But the council's talked about it so much, I think it's important that we don't allow these vicious dog, a truly vicious dog, to be saved or leave town and go somewhere else with no history with it. So I'll be voting yes, and thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire?
Please proceed.
Just making sure that people understand, this is the highest level, so this isn't a dog that nips, this isn't a dog that barks at you when you walk by the fence, this is the highest level of aggression, this is a dog who's already attacked somebody. So I just, I want people not to think that any dog who gets reported to this city will be put down. It's really the extreme cases.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And if I may follow up on that, unless you have anything else, I want to be there under you. This would actually have to go to our municipal judge in order to make the decision for that, so there would be due process, there'd be hearings, there'd be open court discussion from either prosecutor and a defense attorney on behalf of the family who owns the dog, that there'd be a fair hearing with regards to this. It just wouldn't be something that you unilaterally could make that decision.
Correct. By being deemed dangerous when I say, or deemed vicious, that is a designation made by the judge, the adjudication, that, that is how that is made, so there is a trial. And if the owners, you know, plead not guilty, there's a full trial that is held.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a comment in that there's some folks here I know that are interested in this, and I'm continuing to work on a responsible owner piece to this whole discussion about animals, and so that's still in process. Just want to assure the, the public that that's still, still coming at some point in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions. I know I came in late, but...
No worries.
Health Advisory Board, last meeting, there was sixteen dog bites reported?
Yes.
Do we know the breeds?
No, we don't track by breed generally, because breed is, is something that is not consistent, we don't do DNA matches, so we have designations that we may feel, yes.
Okay. Do, are you aware of any incident involving a, a pit bull attack in a home, twice within twelve hours?
I...
Requiring hospitalization?
I don't remember a case where there was twice, but I am familiar with a lot of different cases where, whether it's a pit bull or a husky have, have had an attack in the home, has been very serious, yes.
Recently?
I am not aware of one recently, but I'm not involved in every single case.
Okay. So, so my understanding is we had one pit bull attack, it was a household pet, turned on the female owner, the lady, requiring hospitalization. And they came home from the hospital, and the next morning, the dog came into the bedroom that intact her in the bed that she was recovering in, going back to the hospital. You know nothing about that?
I do not know that case, I'm sorry.
And it was my understanding that animal control was called out to, to take the dog from the home, so you know nothing about that?
I'm not involved in every single case, unless there's...
I'm just asking, because it was recent, it's just within the last three, four weeks. Okay. Could you find out and, and maybe just let me know?
I can't.
Email just a confirmation? I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah.
This is what I hear, this is what I know, and I'd just like to verify that that is in fact something that we've had happen.
I can talk to my officers, yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item twenty-three oh six eight? Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please read, we've already read it, haven't you? Thank you. All right, we'll take the vote, please. Please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
May I, Rowland?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-three zero sixty-eight passes seven to zero. Now, this brings us to twenty-three zero sixty-nine. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three sixty-nine.
An ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Public Transit Operating Assistant Grant in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, two hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents for operating expenses associated with transit service for the period July first, 2023 through June thirtieth, 2024, and making the next necessary appropriations.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? With no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero sixty-nine.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
May I, Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three zero sixty-nine passes seven to zero. Excuse me. Please read twenty-three zero seven zero.
An ordinance approving and amended and restated development agreement between the city and North Point Development LLC in authorizing and approving certain actions in connection therewith.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
May I inquire of our city council, city councillor?
Shoot, you bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Covert?
So, just for clarity, I've already brought this issue to you, and I just want to be sure that I am forthright in that. My husband is a contractor who works for a contract agency who one of their clients is North Point. And I'm just wanting to be sure that that is not an item of conflict of interest for me in making a vote on this item.
That's correct. That does not create a conflict for you on this item.
Thank you very much. That's all I needed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Pardon me. With no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero seven zero. Thank you.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
May I, Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three zero seven zero passes seven to zero. This brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please read the first readings.
Twenty-three dash zero seven five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Mid-America Regional Council in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars for the city's senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and execute the community center services agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero seven six, an ordinance amending Article Three of Chapter Five of the city code by enacting new sections to add requirements for extended stay hotels. Twenty-three dash zero seven seven, an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the city code, Business and Occupation License. This is twenty, twenty dash zero seven eight, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Fourteen of the Independent City Code pertaining to office and commercial districts uses, uses for adult businesses. Twenty-three dash zero seven nine, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C two, General Commercial, to District R six, Single Family Residential, for the properties at nine twenty-three, nine twenty-four, nine twenty-five, and nine twenty-six, North Main Street in Independence, Missouri. Twenty-three dash zero eight zero, an ordinance approving a budget amendment for an additional three hundred thousand to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget for power and light.
Thank you. And then we've got a number of items for information only. This brings us to councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple Saturdays ago, I went to the mayor's trash pickup with my eleven-year-old daughter and picked up trash for a couple of hours along two ninety-one and that alley over by Kmart. And at some point during that, she looked at me and she goes, Dad, why are we picking this stuff up? Why can't we make the people who threw it out their windows pick it up? So it kind of made me think, why can't we do that? It brought, brought up the idea, Mr. City Manager, have we ever considered, basically, we have the housing issue right now with, you know, our city inmates, have we ever considered using something like a community service type thing and having them pick up trash?
It's, it's been some time since that issue was looked at, sir. I will fully admit.
Okay. I wouldn't mind looking at it again, so if you could put that on your list and maybe bring some ideas, if it's even possible. I don't know where we could go with it, but you know, maybe bring it to a study session and, you know, let us...
Be happy to look at that.
Just look into the idea.
Certainly.
The other thing I brought up, I brought up Adventure Oasis a couple of weeks ago, which I'd still like to see that rule get changed, but what I want to bring up tonight is, so every year I get these things in the mail from the zoo, you know, it gives us some passes to go to the zoo, and it's just thanking us for supporting the tax that supports it. I would like to see if it's feasible, and this is something you can tell us, maybe we actually send out some free passes for Adventure Oasis just for, as a thanks for the park sales tax. I don't know exactly how it would work, maybe we can go off, you know, utility billing, you know, list or something. I think it would just be a thank you, you know, to the citizens to do something like that. So if you could look into that, maybe bring that to a study session as well, maybe some options.
Would be glad to, thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, sir. He just brought me a cough drop, so I'm grateful for that, so thank you. Councilmember Perkins, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items. One, utility boxes that we see around the town. I say utility boxes, not the IPL boxes, ours, our infrastructure is taken care of pretty well. It's the, I would say cable boxes, AT&amp;T, different infrastructure that is either not in use and disrepair, looks like heck, all of those. Mr. City Manager, can, we've talked a little bit, I've talked a little bit with our deputy city manager a few months ago about, you know, the unsightliness. Is there a way to, and I don't know if there's a policy, maybe a force of policy, is there any way to explore if they're going to keep infrastructure within our city, it has to be well-maintained, looks well, and certainly not dangerous, and if it needs to be removed, have them remove it?
I would be glad to take a look at that and see the, pardon me, the extent of our authority, and also what additional actions maybe we could bring to this council to enhance our authority. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we received a notification today through the Missouri Municipal League about legislation making its way through Congress that would greatly restrict municipalities' abilities to restrict and enforce utilities in the right-of-way. So this is very timely, but for the time being, with the authority we have, we'll see how we can maximize that.
Please do. I would argue that if they're already existing here and they're in disrepair, then that triggers hazardous stuff, but I'll be looking forward to seeing what your report is. Number two, mowing cycles. I know the first part of this year that we adjusted our mowing cycles on our right-aways to help accommodate some of the issues that we're dealing with, with trash, and, and also with, with our houseless issues as we move camps along that we go through and tidy them up and clean those spots up. With that, there was an offset of our mowing cycles in our right-of-way. So we're getting close to them, so once we are done with the mowing cycle, maybe reassess that. And I would ask that our colleagues give information input to our city manager about what they have seen or heard from constituents regarding our, our different change in mowing cycles. I've noticed a, a different change, but I do understand why we did that, but it may be good to revisit that for next year.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to everyone that today was the first day of school for independent public schools, and that means there's fourteen thousand-plus schools, kids going out to school and every day, and, and which means that they are out among us more, and they're standing at bus stops, and they're doing, you know, walking to school, and just a reminder to keep an eye out for those folks, make sure that we don't have any accidents in any nature, and, and just also, you know, encourage those teachers and those folks that are caring for those kids. It's, it's a good time to just be remembering that, that a lot of kids are doing a lot of good things and doing a lot of learning, so that's really all I have today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind folks that the folks on the charter commission, we have eleven commissioners who have met already fifteen times. Each one of those meetings is three hours long, they're spending a lot of thoughtful time deliberating and have been moving section by section. I just don't want that to fall off your radar, because eventually we will need to have a vote on charter changes, and they have been spending a lot of, of time and deliberation. We're very appreciative for that. My last item is really to ask the city manager just to address the item on the Copakenbrokes Downtown Master Developer, if you would just give a, a brief update on that.
Yes, certainly, and we do appreciate the council's support for that earlier this evening. This has been something that's been contemplated as far back as 2018, when the Downtown Redevelopment Coordinating Committee was doing their work and their final report, envisioned bringing in really as many outside experts as we could to help make targeted strategic investments in our community. The role the master developer will play, for example, we heard not too long ago the tourism master plan report and about the different opportunities, for example, with the National Frontier Trails Museum. The master developer will look at where can we make some of these investments in such a way that it will invite and attract additional private investment in the city. So what are those strategic public investments that we can make and make them in such a way, and prioritize those to attract additional private investment into our, our community? So we have a number of exciting projects moving forward right now, things like the Truman Connected Trail, the Square Streetscape, and then these conversations around our tourism and historic sites, and we really are excited to be working with this very well-known and renowned team to help us figure out the best way to leverage and maximize our public investment to ensure that we maximize the private investment in our community as well.
And just to follow on to that, the Truman Library Board is working with their own grounds development team, and they'll be investing money in the grounds of the Truman Library and are really interested in coordinating that, so it is a seamless approach to the city. So I appreciate their work on that and that the city is willing to work with them, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless? Councilmember? Please proceed.
I guess you're saying me, but I don't even know where to... I guess you're saying me, but I don't even know where to start. I, listen, it is an absolute privilege to be elected and to represent the people of Third District and to love my city. That I was born here, 1962. I'm not a transplant. I was born here. I love my city and I love the people that live here. They are the greatest assets that this city has. And I, like you, I'm, I'm a bit disappointed at the level of tone deafness of what you had to say to this council that went really unnoticed. It doesn't inspire a lot of hope that they'll be heard or that you'll be heard in our new study session model. I hope that we take to heart what was said, what was asked of us, and what we did not do. I look forward and I request that the next study session, we cover all the rules that need to be changed in order to accommodate this new rule change. And I hope that we will do a better job listening to the people when they come to us, opposing something that there is not popular. So I thank you for coming out tonight. I think your attendance was well-meaning and I hope that you'll not be discouraged and continue to come out and voice your opinions as you feel you need to. So thank you to the greatest assets, our retirees, the people who serve our city, public safety, the city staff. Thank you for what you do for us. I want you to know I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, in response to Councilmember Stewart's request about community service, not that I'm the final word, I've spoken with our prosecutor about it and actually a number of people around town lately. Apparently, community service has been, the liability is expensive and it's incredibly time-intensive to manage. I'm not changing anything you've asked for. I just wanted to let you know that it, it's a good, it's a good idea. I wish and hope we could do it. So I'll be interested to see if Mr. Walker finds anything else, else new on that. Rental-ready landlords and business licenses, this is one of my favorite topics. I love, love, love our good landlords. I love the folks that have good houses in good neighborhoods that you would never know they're rental. And people do need housing. Not everybody has the ability to buy a house. However, just as we saw tonight, a person flaunting the Airbnb rules and frankly just treating their property as just any random business with no responsibility. Well, if you're a landlord, you, you are running a business and you have a responsibility to yourself, to the city, and to your neighbors to treat it as such. So we've started a very small program, but we're coming for you. I want to make this very clear, Mr. Walker. Let me be clear. Landlords that have not followed through on rental-ready, landlords that, that keep properties in disrepair so that people pay their good money, that they can barely afford to live there, we're, we're going to put it into this. All the out-of-town landlords that literally, and we're talking hundreds if not thousands of houses, that they pay no attention to any rules whatsoever, we're going to find you and we're going to get you. So that I'm excited about. One more thing, I wanted to thank Councilmember Mike Steinmeier and former Councilmember Mike Cuff for helping raise funds to purchase a new police officer. Obviously, you don't normally purchase police officers, but when they are of the four-legged and fur-covered variety, you can do such a thing. And what a, what a great addition to our police department who desperately needed a K-9 unit and a newly-trained K-9 unit since marijuana is now legal in the state of Missouri. So this is changing policing as well. So personally and as a colleague, I thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Stewart, I want to thank you for attending the mayor's trash pickup and for your daughter to be there. And she is a delightful person. Not only has she done it once, but she's done it twice, if I'm correct in my memory. So she's been out there quite often and stays the whole time and does a great job. And this time did not receive any tics. Is that right? That is good. That's what, that our goal is that we have a zero-tick infestation. So with that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.